Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular township council meeting of October 20th, 2015.
Adequate notice, this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meetings law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 8, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on January 12, 2015, and in the Star Ledger January 14, 2015, and was forwarded by fax out of local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8, 2015. Note, council meetings are videotaped and aired on cablevision public access channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Please rise for the flag salute.
Mr. Stanton, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Paluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Mr. Corrifi.
Here. Also present Mayor James R. Barberio, L&amp;M Sandman, business administrator, Paul Cazarelli.
No.
No Paul.
No.
John Iglesino, Esquire Township Attorney, Ann M. Cucci, CFO, Nora Jolie, Deputy Register. Upcoming meetings, November 10, 2015 at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting. November 24, 2015 at 7:30 PM, regular meeting. At this time, we're going to have a short presentation by our OEM coordinator, Mr. Eric Hubner.
Council President, I asked Eric to come out. The agenda was really pretty much prepared, and although there's lateness in getting it on the council meeting, I did say to one councilman who asked, "If you're comfortable with what Eric has to say with regard to the resolution, you can either approve it this evening or for the first meeting in November," because there's a time element, I would think, and Eric will address that. Thank you.
Just give a little tap on, tap on.
Yeah, just do it again.
Sometimes it takes about 30 seconds. There it goes.
Okay.
I did that. We just happened to do it at the same time.
I know you need it for recording, but...
Yeah.
You have it on the on position?
Yes.
Okay.
Still recording.
I'm visually getting it.
Shake it.
Can we give him another mic?
You don't want me to touch it.
Need a new audience.
If you give that to Ellen, she'll probably...
That's right.
Turn it off when you bring it back here, otherwise it'll screech.
I hear it.
You can hear it?
I hear it.
She got another one, it's better.
Nora's got it.
Oh, there you go. Excellent.
Good evening. In front of you is the resolution to renew a mitigation plan. Emergency management consists of four general areas: response, preparedness, recovery, and mitigation. This deals with mitigation. About eight years ago FEMA came out and federal government said, "Any town that wants to participate in any funding from the federal government needs to have a mitigation plan." In working with the county, we got the county freeholders to approve the hiring of a consultant to put together a Morris County mitigation plan, which would include every town that participated and wanted to participate. So that was done about five years ago, and the plan requires an update every five years. What this plan basically does, and I'm sure in government world, it's about 1,000 pages of something. Precipity is 28 pages, and this plan is visible on the morrisoem.org website under mitigation. You can read it, and each of the towns has a subsection there. What FEMA is trying to do is trying to get everyone to put down a wish list, put down a project list of what we'd like to accomplish for our community, and then see if we can seek funding if we develop a need for one of those projects, and it might apply for federal funding. By having this basic plan approved by the town fathers and in conformance with FEMA guidelines, we would be eligible to submit an application. Of course, we know they're all competitive, and we have to compete to get funding. So that's what this plan is tonight in front of you. It's just simply a renewal of the plan we have. As part of the renewal process, Justin Leesa, who quarterbacks this, because it's primarily engineering-driven, Justin, for example, is the head of the national flood insurance program in town, so a lot of this has to do with some of the flooding and elevation projects that we have. There's projects on there for generator capacity for the schools, which are in process now, so we are making progress on some of these. Whether we use this program to seek federal funding or we still accomplish it on our own, these are just an outline or wish list of about 18 projects now that we have on the list. So that's what's in front of you, and I hope you will re-up and keep us in conformance so we're eligible.
Eric, just a quick question for you. It says as contention upon a budget approvals, is this a matching grant?
This particular document does not entail any financial portion whatsoever. This is simply a plan approval. Should the town seek to get, apply to the federal government for a grant, I'm sure there would be, depending on what grant was available and what the criteria was...
Right.
It would be dependent on that at that time.
But you have to go through this process to even be eligible to do that, and that's what the significance of this document is, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Every year, the township has to complete a best practice worksheet, which is 50 questions consisting of management, financial, procurement, and other practices. Depending on the scores and your answers to these questions will determine the aid that you get from the state. Certain townships, if they do not participate or do certain things to have a yes or a prospective answer, they reduce the amount of funding that they get for the very last payment of our aid. Fortunately, when we finished ours, we scored high enough to get 100% of our aid. Some of the questions are impossible to answer yes to. You'll see, like, do you participate in the state health benefits? No. For us, it doesn't pay to participate in the state health benefits. Some of the other questions are, we just aren't unable to answer yes to, but for the most part, we did answer yes or prospective to 44 of the 50 questions. We're happy to answer any items that you have a question on. I will post it on the website as well. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
And just a quick question. Our score is 88%.
Yes.
And we have six no.
Correct.
And we answered 40 yeses, right?
Forty yeses, and then there's not applicable and prospective.
Okay.
All those, the yes, the not applicable, and prospective will count as a positive answer.
I'm just looking at the last page where it says how many yes you xed, and it said here that we lose 20% equal to 1% of total aid if we had 33 to 40. Is the 40 at the 40, or has it jumped to the 41?
No, it's, I'm not even sure. The point is that we did score 44, so we're way above that.
Right.
At this point, I believe it's 41 to 50 is no penalty.
Yes, 41 to 50.
Yeah, and we have 44.
Okay, because you have a prospective question, I believe, as well.
Correct. I mean, some of the questions are, the questions have changed every year, and the first year of some of these questions come out, you have the option to answer prospective. Next year, we probably will not have that option. I've noticed that pattern as this questionnaire has come out each year. Do you want to... Yeah. Yeah, there's something to vote, it's just we want to put it on the record.
Ellen, real quick, what was our score last year?
It was about the same, 44.
So we're doing better since you came on board?
Well, absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
I think it was 43 and a half.
43.9.
It was 43 and a half, and now it's 44.
It's right.
Okay, the 18, will we film it?
The 18.
Okay, good.
The questions do change, so, yeah.
And in regards to the nos, I know some of them pertain to audit requests.
Yep.
Do you think we're going to have repetitive findings in the following year now?
Um, I don't know.
One of the numbers that I just want to share is that when Ann had come, there were 17 ordered comments that we had to be cautious of, and now we're down to two. So that is definitely something we did improve upon.
Right.
Seventeen ordered comments that we have down to two. So that's...
There is, some of these...
So that should affect that.
Yeah, some of these take time. The one audit comment that's on there is going to take some time, it may be on there again. It's in process. The same with the outside police. It's in process, but I had to mention it because it was mentioned once before.
Is there any one in particular that's the most serious that you need to address further?
The previous year, this year, you mean, or?
Is it the...
No.
The SOC report?
We have the SOC report that we're working very hard to get. It's something that I can't control. We've asked for it, they've given us the insurance, they've put us on the insurance as we asked, and a SOC report is waiting. It's a major audit report for them, for the insurance company. I expect to have it before the end of the year. I'm sure that if I get it in January 2nd or 3rd, it'll be fine. Usually with these items that are audited and audit comments, if we can fix them before the audit comes out, it's okay. So that's why we have preliminary reviews and stuff with the auditor.
And IDA did name us as additional insured?
Yes, they did.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So they're just working on the SOC report?
That's the first point, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, bids to be taken, none. Requests for quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Ordinances for second reading, none. Before we move on to the public hearing, I have a, before, excuse me, before we move on to the public hearing, I have a resolution that I'd like to see added to the agenda, copies for everybody and for Mr. Iglesino, in reference to, I'd like to see this added to our agenda for next meeting. It's for responsible bidder resolution for construction projects in the town, and the reason that I feel this is necessary, and if anybody has any questions, please feel free to let me know or email me, but I believe this resolution will force people that are bidding on construction projects in town to hire skilled workers to perform the work. It also mandates that they are OSHA certified, which is very important, and the contractors have to act in good faith where they have to hire local residents, a percentage of local residents have to be hired to do these construction projects. So basically what that's doing is that is residents of Precipity will be hired and will offer employment to these workers. So I feel that is a good thing. It also, by doing this, it makes the contractors, they have to hire legal residents, which means those people pay taxes, so the government and the county and the town will be receiving taxes from these. There'll be no illegal aliens doing, performing any of the work. So... Did I give a copy, did a copy go down?
No.
For you, Nora? Okay. Here, I have another copy here.
I'll take one.
So, Mr. Iglesino, if you could just, I basically took that from another town and just used the verbiage.
Yeah, I can take a look at it. The issue is always, and by the way, the policy goals that you enunciated are laudable, and, you know, the reason for these kinds of provisions, which are usually found in ordinances where they have a legal effect, is that for particularly large-scale projects, you want to ensure that they're done correctly, particularly where there's a public interest. And there's two kinds of projects in which there's a public interest. One are projects that are actually performed by the municipality, and the other is with respect to redevelopment projects, because once you declare an area in need of redevelopment and you move forward with a redevelopment project, and that is by definition, according to Article 8, Section 3 of the New Jersey State Constitution, a public purpose. And so in those two instances, you want to ensure that these are high, you know, these are done with skilled labor, and this is code, let's be honest, it's code for union labor. The issue always becomes in terms of where do you have the thresholds and what impact will that have on costs and the ability to move forward. So for example, in Jersey City, which has an ordinance which is similar to this, where there's a lot of high-rise construction, they set, for example, a $25 million threshold, where they say projects over $25 million, and then this type of thing would kick in because on the smaller projects, sometimes they just get too expensive, they won't pencil out, particularly redevelopment projects. We had this issue arise in another Morris County municipality where there's some pretty nice redevelopment going on, and, you know, that municipality opted not to do this because when you had a stick construction type of project, the costs were just too much, the deals don't pencil. That's not to say that there won't be, certainly the unions have the ability to bid, they do. When you have steel construction, usually that's where you get the union work. So UPS, for example, that project, you know, should have union work. So I would say this, what I think we should do is take a survey of some municipalities that are similar to Precipity to see, you know, what they're doing. I know Jersey City off the top of my head because, you know, we've done work there, so I know they have this $25 million, you know, projects over $25 million, this would apply under a dozen because of feasibility issues. So I think we should take a look at that and craft something that makes sense for Precipity, because it would seem to me that what you don't want to do is discourage really good, meaningful redevelopment, you know, take the Route 10 site, for example.
Absolutely.
You don't want to price that, you don't want to impose a cost on that so they say, "We can't do this." And I've seen personally that happen in municipalities, and I've seen municipalities that, you know, quite frankly, you would think, you know, politically are very pro-labor, where they say, "We also have to move it forward." So there may be parts of that that are union labor and parts that are not. So again, you have this, you know, these competing public policy interests that I think we have to take a look at and craft something that works for Precipity. We're happy to do that and work with you in that regard.
Yeah, because like I said, I know, you know, it ensures like the OSHA certification, so some of these other...
Well, it's OSHA and it's skilled labor. I mean, you want to ensure that when you have, you want to ensure, as Councilman Valori said, high-quality work, and you get high-quality work by having skilled labor, and when they talk about, I'm sure there's verbiage in here about apprenticeships and things of that nature, you know, that's what you're guaranteeing. Again, there's competing interests in terms of costs and which projects are better suited for that sort of thing and which aren't. I think we have to understand that in the context of Precipity and the kind of development on the redevelopment end that we'll get, and the kind of public works projects that you're likely to be doing, so that we can craft something that, you know, that makes sense. Understanding and realizing that even some of New Jersey's largest urban municipalities have a threshold level that says projects over a certain amount, this would apply, projects under a certain amount, it won't apply because of feasibility issues.
First, I'd like to commend the council president for bringing this to the forefront today. I've been speaking with the labor unions with regards to this resolution, and I did explain to them that, you know, this resolution isn't one size fits all. Like the council has said, that, you know, we need to look into it, and, you know, there are thresholds, but I definitely, I agree with the council president that you want to have skilled labor, you want to have safety, and also, you know, when you're bringing, you're putting Precipity residents to work, that's important, so I commend you.
Thank you. And Mayor, or John, this would go into an ordinance?
I think when we get something that fits for Precipity, I think it really should be an ordinance rather than a resolution, and that's how they're usually set up.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. Make a motion. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi.
Yes. Okay, please, when you come up, state your name, address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes. I believe he turned the microphone off, so you'll have to turn it back on.
Takes a minute.
There.
Kind of there.
You can take it out of there. I think it's on.
Oh, that's part of it.
It's on.
It's on?
Yes.
Julia Peterson, check if I've all Precipity roads, speaking as totally a private citizen?
Nah, it went off. Battery went dead, man?
This is...
Let me see that. Yeah, it's not going to work.
Maybe the battery from the other one that went out.
Yeah.
Yeah, switch batteries.
Test, test, test. You know, would you mind speaking from here, is that all right, if they look this way? This microphone will work. I mean...
Yeah.
You're gonna have to press this.
Okay, all right, yeah. Whoa.
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 I'm speaking as a private citizen, and I don't know whether this is appropriate, but I want to pay tribute to one of our really fine Precipity citizens who was killed this week. And it's even funnier because we didn't agree about everything, but we agreed about some things. Her name was Kristen Ritter. She lived on Brooklyn Drive, and she was only 38 years old. She was killed in an automobile accident, and she was truly the kind of young citizen that us oldies wish we had more of. She was truly an inspiring and vivid person, and Precipity won't be the same without her. Now, the second thing I want to ask is, I want to ask about the status of the Forge Pond, and I'm asking as a private citizen, but I know in advisory committee I'm on, we constantly talk about it, and my assumption, you can correct me, is that because the time limit for that has passed, that the town has ceded that land back to the developer. Is that correct?
I think it's sort of moot at the moment, and has been because of environmental issues.
Okay, but I want to explain to you as a private citizen, my biggest concern, which is that as the Forge Pond sits there and is silted up by the downflow from the, I mean, I understand the dam was a, I mean, this is a hairy, hairy issue that's gone back 25 or 30 years. However, as soon as that pond becomes an upland, it will be developed, and I am very concerned about the rate of development that suddenly has speeded up a lot, partly because of the areas in need of redevelopment that have been designated, but those of us that travel the roads here, and there are no more roads in Precipity main roads than there were in 1950, the main roads are exactly the same, and it, you know, we aren't going to be able to attract people to work here if they can't get to work in a timely fashion. And, I mean, different things happen, like funerals at the funeral home. You know, when there's an important person dies and there's a funeral there, nobody can get up and down Precipity Road. And I'm not saying anything about that, but I do wonder where we're going to put additional people in the town. The last question I'd like to ask is what exactly is, how many residences are our COA obligation? Because my understanding of COA is that every section of a development has to be some COA, so that if it's 400 and every development can only be 20% COA, that means a lot more housing. So, you know, those are just informational questions. Thank you.
I'm kind of an oldie too, and I used to watch The Honeymooners. Do you ever watch The Honeymooners?
You're not as old as I am. Trust me.
I look old, but I was a Honeymooners fan, so as Ralph Cramden would say, that's the $64,000 question. How many years does Precipity, oh, we don't have an answer to that question yet, we're in court, that process will yield the answer to that question. We have a general idea of what the parameters may be, but we don't know for sure, and won't for, likely for several months.
Okay, and the Forge Pond is moot, which means that the council has decided to not accept that 131 acres?
Well, the issue there again is, is that, first of all, I don't know that it's conceivable that that would be uplands suitable for development, but the issue, you know, for the moment is, is that, you know, is our environmental issues and taking on an unquantified potential cleanup of property. And so I think there's some reluctance to move forward and subject the town to, you know, an unquantifiable cost on the cleanup.
And that's totally, you're referring to the silt that's come from rotating?
Well, no, it could be a variety of different things. There would have to be, you know, extensive testing. The problem, the complication under New Jersey is if you test with what they call an LSRP, there's a reporting requirement to the DEP that could then make the property owner liable for an unquantifiable sum to clean it up. So it's not an easy, it's not easy to determine without significant exposure to either the property owner or the township, the extent to which cleanup of the property may have to occur. And so, you know, the township has thus far been reluctant, I think advisably so, to take on an unquantifiable potential financial exposure for a property that is not developable anyway.
Now?
Well, I think it's reasonable to say now and...
30 seconds.
...foreseeable future. I would never say, I don't usually use the word "ever," but I...
There is no "never." I mean, Precipity development, there's always a chance of...
I would say for the very foreseeable future. To underscore that point, the property owner of that particular property is not seeking to include that property in Precipity's housing element fair share plan, which I would submit is proof that even he doesn't think it's developable anytime soon, if ever.
John, along those lines, though, I've accepted your explanation for several years now on this, and I'm beginning to not want to accept it anymore. I'm trying right now to say, why don't we spend the money to do environmental impact and see exactly what it is we think may or may not be there, because we don't know.
Well, I don't think...
I'd rather spend the money and take the 130 acres, 130,000 acres that he owes us than sit here and speculate what may or may not be there.
Well, we'd have to renegotiate, you know, with him on that, because I don't think that he would be willing to expose himself to unquantifiable exposure because of whatever the township may find.
We've given him that obligation. You explained that to him two years ago, three years ago.
And he wasn't willing to do it, but we can talk about that, and if we need to take it up again.
I think we need to talk about it some more.
Yeah. Now, over here.
You're gonna have the mic...
No.
It's not gonna pick up, and the micro...
No.
No, you're gonna have to come, that microphone that we would have been able to use for you, it won't, it's not working.
Just bring him...
Bring in the microphone.
Just bring him the microphone.
Bring his chair.
I don't think that'll come down, will it?
Yeah, I think I can make it come down. Yeah, it can go, yeah, yeah, there's enough for you.
We're gonna give you a chair over there, Mr. Foca.
There he is. Okay? Maybe one... Maybe one for the mic and one for him. Here. There you go. Absolutely. Okay, there he is. No, you have to press the button. No, but you have to hold it. Yeah, I'm sorry. No, cheating.
Everybody hear me okay?
Press the button.
No, you can hear him.
Push it. Go ahead, press that. Hold on to it while you talk.
I pressed the other side.
Yeah.
Can't even look at this.
How about, can you hear me now?
Go ahead, you ready?
Lights down.
Good.
My name is Thomas, Thomas C. Folko. I live at 820 Park Road in Persephone. Well, the man that I want to talk to or have a discussion with, I guess he's gone. But my question would be, he hired Mike Reggio, Reggio, and, and housing, Mr. Barberio, a retired police officer. And this gentleman that was working as a retired police officer, he made $135,466. I have it right over here, the, the amount from the town. I'd like to know one thing about Mr. Barbero. Why doesn't he hire someone that needs the job? Here's a man that's gonna be collecting, quote unquote, quoting on 65% of his salary, which was $135 and change. Why can't Mr. Barbero hire someone in town here that's out of work, that will score many, many points, rather than give it to a retired police officer that's making about $88,000 in, in, in retirement pay? Which I based on 65% of his base pay. I believe between 60 and 70% at the retirement age. Am I right?
Sounds about right.
Okay, 60 or 70%. I based it on 65, 65%. And my figures comes out around $88,000. Without his $37,500 housing. But why doesn't he give that job to someone that really needs it, that's out of work? That's my question. Was this a political, was this a political adventure? Was this a political favor? This is all I want to know. Was it a political favor? I know it's in his criteria, Mr. Anglosino. I know it's in his criteria to be able to hire and fire whoever he wants. But I believe, in my belief, it's not in his criteria to keep drawing, 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 and make up his positions in town. That's it. It's all over. Bye. Nobody saying anything? Nobody feeling the same way you think?
Not, not appropriate to discuss. It's not appropriate for the governing body to discuss personnel matters in an open session. Not appropriate to entertain that conversation with you in open session and without providing a rice notice to the employee, so I would
Wow, you got the answer for everything.
I would counsel the council to remain quiet.
Wow, I'm impressed.
Thank you, Mr. Folko. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Very impressed. You know you're making a jackass with yourself, don't you?
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Mr. Homiak.
Nicholas Homiak, Sagan? Oh, yeah, from Lake Hiawatha, 26 Oneida. It's funny to hear you guys talking about the, the Forge Pond and all, and what has to be done or what could be done. It's called, it's called the Land Use Capacity Map, an interactive map, a consistency report. Any one of you guys or ladies can, can get it from the Highlands. You can find out whatever you want about any landscape around here. And that's, that's part of the, the problem. I still can't believe that we were in conformance for 14 years, and this town did absolutely nothing. We don't even, we do not have, as of this moment, environmental resource inventory. If we're going to be attacked, or threatened, or proposed by developers, shouldn't we know our town, our landscape? Shouldn't we know what land should be developed, how, and possibly what land should not be developed at all? Maybe Persephone even still to this day has too much land on the market for what could be good for this town. But all of this could be had by conforming or using the Highlands' information to improve our own master plan. Mr. Anglosino, back in 2010, you even boasted the fact that the township would receive legal protection if it was in conformance. But certain individuals, I guess, in the council or the administration, didn't want to go along with it. But the thing was, we were in conformance for 14 years, hush, hush, on the QT, because the public participation did not take place, and even this town's environmental commission did not have, put in their two cents about any of it. So we're gipping ourselves. We're, yeah, we're gipping ourselves. Yeah, the developers are coming, but what do we have? We don't even have a, a resource inventory. All this information's available already. The work's been done. We don't have to pay anybody for it. I got a, I have a 40-page consistency report. I'll leave it for you here, for an example, just so you guys can, can look at it, see what it looks like. There's another consistency report for the same landscape that goes all the way to 90 pages. So don't waste your time, waste your money. If you, if you want to know what's going on, talk to the Highlands. They were here in July. They made a presentation. There was hardly anybody here. You picked a summer month, everybody's on vacation. Will it any of you gentlemen ever contact them, talk to them? It's not all about COA. It's about good land management. It's not, COA is just one component. The conformance, the master plan is not COA. It's good land use for everyone, including developers. So That's about all I could say. Is anybody interested in seeing what a consistency report looks like? Can I?
Yes, can you give it to the clerk?
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick, you can give it to John.
Yeah, I have another one. I'll bring it to the planning board.
Mr. Nelson?
Oh, it's working now?
Give something else. For your information. It's as simple as this.
You can go ahead.
Ready? It's on, right? You know, Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. I, I didn't know anything about that with Forge Pond, that it was, that the deal fell through. But let me just tell you, as a councilman, I feel like a jerk, because I remember when we voted on this, I think we were at the Persephone Hills High School with 500 people in the audience, and I was there promoting it, saying that the only reason that we're gonna vote yes on it was because we were gonna get the 135 acres. And I feel like a damn schmuck, because I got even Roy Mesmer to go ahead and get up there and say it was a good deal for the town. And now that we have, we're finding out that we're not getting it, Julie's absolutely right. It won't be in 10 years, it won't be in 15 years, but the developers' great grandchildren will be developing that for, for houses. Absolutely right. That's, that's not what I wanted to come up here and say. You know, John, I knew John was a Honeymooners fan because when I, the last council meeting, when I asked about Michael Lavery, his answer was hummina, hummina, hummina. Now, is Mr. Lavery working for the town? We, I was getting conflicting answers at the two council meetings. That's a simple question, I guess you'll answer me when I'm all done. The third thing is, and the reason why I wanted to stay down here, is, is to give a little history lesson to Ann and Ellen, because they weren't working for the town. Back in 2008, when Michael Luther was mayor, he put forward an insurance company for the council to vote on. The council said no and chose their own insurance company, which is a big no-no, similar to the fact that the council here tried to hire an attorney. We found out, which I think was, the council doesn't have the authority to appoint anybody. But in this report that the state comptroller, Matthew Boxer, put out in 2009, what he did say, and I'll, I'll leave this for Ellen, that even though the council doesn't have the authority to make their appointment, they certainly have the authority and the legal obligation to vote no on an insurance company. And by proxy, I'm saying that, you can extrapolate that, that, that can be in the insurance broker. The last council meeting, I asked, it's getting late in the year, is there anybody negotiating 2016 health insurance contract? I know, I know the attorney said, don't, don't answer the question, but it's blazingly obvious, I, I know that the people who work in this administration are not incompetent. Of course you're negotiating health insurance for 2016. We're at the end of October. So the only conclusion I can have is that it's Fairview. Is doing the, the, that Fairview Insurance would be negotiating the insurance contracts for, for 2016. And if that's the case, under what authority do they have the right to negotiate 2016 contracts when in January of this year, the council, whether you like them or not, no matter how it voted, it, I think it was a three to two vote, or a, or a four to one vote, said, no, you can't have Fairview negotiating as our broker for 2016. And if Fairview is doing it, how is that possible? And how is that legal? Oh, last thing. I put in an open request. It was due back Friday. The signed contract with Aurora. I didn't get a response whether it exists, or if I'm gonna get it, or if I'm not gonna get it.
You'll get a response.
Okay, okay. That's it.
Thank you.
That's your question, Sarah, is cannot be answered by the council. That has to be answered by the mayor. Do we have any answers for Mr. Nelson, or no?
Only in the, the last question is, yes, you'll have an answer. And I really thought that, I thought Susan's email had, you were copied on it. Okay, so you will get an answer. Yes, and you have to maintain it then, yeah.
Hi.
Other than that.
I'm Ada Visaka, and I live at 4 Fox Chase Drive. And I feel that the past couple times, there's questions about whether you could hire or fire a broker, and then the employees have no insurance. And I know that I'm uniquely qualified to answer that question for all of you. I've been a broker for the past 30 years, and I have other public entities that are my clients. You, Persephone was my client for 60, for six years, 60, for six years, and I brought in IDA, Insurance Design Administrator. They are the third-party administrators. So Insurance 101 on self-insurance is this. There is a broker that goes out and finds you the best premium that's renewable, yours is on January 1st. So your broker should have been out wherever that is, going out and getting you the best proposal. In your case, you have IDA. They are the ones that pay your claims up to, it used to be in 2013, $150,000 per employee. The town pays those per employee up to a certain amount, an aggregate amount. I think it was 11 million. I don't remember exactly. So then, above that $150,000 per employee, and the aggregate of 11 million, that's assuming it was that amount, there is an insurance company. It's called a stop-loss carrier that pays any claims above that. So you changing your broker is not going to lose coverage for your employees. That's a fact. It's undisputable. It is what it is. It's, I'm so certain as the night comes into day, day goes into night. So if you were to fire your broker, your insurance would continue. Now, IDA, on the other hand, is the one you do not want to fire. They're the ones that pay all your claims, make sure they're accurately, accurate, get your discount from your network, I think it was AmeriHealth. So that you cannot fire until you replace them, otherwise you'd have nobody paying your claims. So come, so there's a contract with your insurance company, whoever that might be. It's, could be Sun Life, it could be Gerber, there's so many of them. And then, there's your contract with IDA to pay your claims. They take money out of your account, they give you a summary of what they paid, you approve it, et cetera, et cetera. And then, there's your broker that, on an annual basis, you approve it. The, the town, the council approves it. The mayor ultimately, I believe, chooses in this type of government. But if the town, the council doesn't approve it, you shouldn't have that broker because they have not approved it. But the past couple of years, it keeps on going on and on without approving it. Now, I got fired as your broker. You did not lose coverage. You just, your current broker just went out and got, and you stayed for the following six months, and on January 1st, they went out, supposedly got your other coverage. That's basically how it works. I just became a broker a couple of months ago with a broker record letter. That was it. In your case, now it's January 1st, your renewal is happening. It should happen now, where you choose your broker, whether it's your current one or another one. An RFP should be going out, or RFQ, I should say, for qualification. They come here, you choose the right one that best fits you. You definitely should be looking at other alternatives for your benefits, because the Cadillac tax is coming in 2018, and I know for a fact you're above the threshold. You have to pay 40% above that threshold. So it's huge. You should be looking at renegotiating your contract with union, with different plan designs, so that way you could lower your premium and you're not stuck with the Cadillac tax. So much has to be done that you bickering about the broker, you really should go out for an RFQ.
30 seconds.
Get the best qualified broker advisor that could bring you through the quagmire of this healthcare reform and the cost and plan designs. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very educational.
Mary, Persephone 273, Marcella Road. I just have questions on how your, how you set up your website. Currently, on the patch, there is misinformation about an ordinance that was, said it was passed when it was not. And there, there is, there, matter of fact, it was Julie who actually did see information on this ordinance on the website that's not correct either. So can someone please be in charge with making sure the information that does go on the website is accurate, so that it is reported accurately, so people don't get upset, like me? The other thing of it is, is this Forge Pond, it's 133 acres that the township was supposed to acquire, is that correct?
I don't recall. I don't have the agreement in front of me. I haven't reviewed it in a long time.
Pardon? I didn't, I didn't hear you. Approximately. Approximately. Of which Forge Pond is, what, about four acres?
I, I don't have the agreement in front of me. I don't recall. I haven't reviewed it in quite some
Well, let's like, can we, I would assume Forge Pond is maybe about 5% of that property we were supposed to acquire? And now you're saying that that pond area has now jeopardized the 133 acres? Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
It's the whole 133 acres that are environmentally being questioned? Or is it just the pond, the footprint of the pond itself, and where the Forge Pond, where the forge actually stood with the slag?
I'll answer your questions when you, when you finish, so as to not impede on your time.
Okay, well, because it's pertinent on the fact that I do believe of the 133 acres, there are quite a bit of wetland, uplands there, and the pond area itself is turning into upland vegetation.
And the pond area itself is turning into upland vegetation as we speak. And I do believe Julie is right, that in the long run, if it, the developer gets to keep what he's got, he will develop it. I mean, let's face it, he's a develop, he's a, they're an entity which solely develops areas. And that, I can't see how that's not disputed. The other thing of it is, is all the while, while that area was before the planning board, Forge Pond was a pertinent issue, and the fact that we saved land there. And now, all of a sudden, it seems like, well, due to the last negotiations, which I believe Jonathan had said was voted on by the council, now we stand to lose that open space acreage. And that was always part of the contention of that developer being allowed to build the amount of houses he built there. Michael, you were on the planning board. You know, you, you sat there and listened to all of that.
What you're saying is correct. Mossberg, when he developed Forge Pond, used the total area to consider his six units per acre density for the Forge Pond development. And then, because of the Forge Pond and the wetlands surrounding it, he had to cram those homes and townhouses into a very small area. You can reach out and touch the next house. They're so close, it's embarrassing when I drive through there and look at it. It's not, not good planning. But the average density was still six units per acre, because he counted Forge Pond and the wetlands around it, when he calculated the average density. Technically, he should never be allowed to build that, because that land was a part of his calculation to give him the density he already has and has already built, technically. Now, whether there's some loophole that, you know, high-priced lawyers can find, I don't know. But I don't, I don't like sitting here either, and I never heard that it lapsed, and we no longer have the option. The last thing I heard was, it kept, we kept delaying the decision.
Look, I don't have the agreement in front of me. I haven't had reason to look at it in quite some time, so, you know.
My understanding was, it didn't lapse, we kept extending the deadline.
I'm happy to provide an update on where the agreement is. If I knew this was going to come up or be discussed, I would have been prepared to discuss it. Obviously, I have not had any reason to look at it in, in quite some time, but I could certainly, I could certainly revisit it.
It's almost like he's holding that, I do believe it's about four acres, I could be wrong, of a pond, it's like, he's holding it.
Thirty seconds.
As a hostage. I mean, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me when we should have had that.
No, we were, we were, the township was reluctant to take possession, because there are contaminants, both by the dam and in the pond itself.
Yes.
And the, not knowing what the contaminants are, how they're spread out, and what the cost would be to remove them, okay? Taking possession, possession of that property, including the dam, could put us at risk for heavy, very, very high remediation costs. That's what held it up.
Yes.
And we've never had, and this is what I've been objecting to now, up to this point in time, we haven't done a, an environmental assessment of that property to see just what, what's there, and what it would cost for moving. We need, in my opinion, we should be doing that.
I believe it should have been the developer's responsibility to provide that information, since he had held it the longest.
Can we, can we just, can we have an update at our next meeting of that? Thank you.
Pat Potatche, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Lou, just like to congratulate you on your appointment. I saw it in the paper. Pat Potatche, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Lou, just like to congratulate you on your appointment. I saw it in the paper. Said, "I'd like to congratulate late Lou on his appointment to the park commission."
Yeah, congratulations.
And thank Julia for bringing up Kristen, who was a fine member of our community. Lou, did you ever find out your question to why there were two different attorneys on the Karifi case you had asked? Did Mr. Driscoll explain why there were two different attorneys working on that case? This was about two meetings ago, on 9:15 to be exact.
Yeah, I don't think that was my question. I was, I was just sure that was somebody's question.
It was actually my question.
Okay.
And no, Mr. Inglisino, you have not gone back to me on that answer.
Okay, thank you.
I told you to call Mr. Driscoll.
And I asked you to have him call me. And you did not do that either.
I told you, I'm not involved in that case. You call Mr. Driscoll if you want to speak to Mr. Driscoll. I told you, I'm not going to speak to Mr. Driscoll.
Okay, so you didn't do your job, so I'll have to do it for you. Okay, no problem. I'll take care of it.
I'm also a name defendant. I'm conflicted, so I'm not involved in the case. So, you can call Mr. Driscoll if you have a question for him.
Okay, then you should have said it that day.
I did.
You offered to call.
The thing with Fairview, I've been saying that all along, we do have a right to go out. We do not have to keep them. But please make up your minds, because it's already late at the game. Got one other thing that's, two things, everything actually, what you just talked about with Forge Pond and whatever. It finds, it just occurs to me that everything's slipping by. People are not keeping track of what needs to be kept track of. This is land we just lost. I mean, we lose money every time you don't use it, and the budgets, they come back. I mean, come on, people. Get on the ball here. I got a question to the council, and maybe Brian Stanton can answer this for me. Brian, let me see your face.
He's right here.
It's nothing about the January 13th, 2013 meeting, okay? I've been attending the Board of Ed meetings, and they've been talking about SROs. And I know there's actually a shared service right now, that I'm finding out that it's possible between the township and the school regarding these SROs. Now, I mean, nobody's keep, you know, talking about it or anything, and it just seems to be mentioned, and then, like, I think the school board's almost ready to vote on the damn thing, and nobody's talked about it. I haven't seen it come forward to the council. So, Brian, as a liaison to the Board of Ed, can you give us any insight on it? Can you tell us what?
The mayor's not here, I believe. We have a contract for the SRO.
We have a contract.
He reimbursed the town, yes.
Came before the council?
No, that was a while ago. That was.
No, 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 no. I know there's an existing one. This was a new one. They were doing new things. They wanted to use retired cops, okay, as SRO offices.
Well, in this, in this form of government, it wouldn't be the council that negotiates any contracts anyway. It would be the administration that negotiates contracts, and when those negotiations are completed, then it would come before the council.
Right, right. I see what you're saying, John. You know what? But my concern, my concern is.
We don't know anything about it.
Yeah. Well, that's my concern, is that you don't know anything about it. My concern is, how much is this going to cost the taxpayers? How much is this going to affect our manpower in the police department if they are using active policemen?
Alan, do you know anything about this?
Yeah, I have.
Are you done, Pat?
No, I got a couple more questions.
Was this just recently at a, at a?
Um, yes, actually, yes.
Oh, I, I only know of last.
So, there's something.
No, no. This is new. This is addition, too.
Okay.
Okay? And this is going to create any new vacancies, and to what extent in our police department? If we're taking cops out of our police department to be SROs, if that's what we're doing, that's going to cost us. Exactly, as an example, I was going to give you the EMTs that got moved over to the police department, suppose were no expense to us, but it ended up being an expense. And what I was going to say was, why can't the school, and I know this was part of their thinking back then, was that they hire the retired cops, they hire and keep them there, that they are on school premises, that they have no need to wait for anybody to come. I just want you to investigate a little bit more.
Well, hold on, Alan.
Just real quick.
Yeah.
We have an officer in the two high schools.
Yes, I know that.
And we just did a contract, too, with a huge savings by not having overtime.
Yeah.
But Alan, is this something that?
Now, this is something in addition to.
In addition to, yes.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
That's what I'm asking you to look into.
Okay, definitely.
Thank you.
Alan, can you fill us in on this?
Yeah, yes. First, backing it up, yes, we did negotiate with the school board, and for the first time, I think after 15 or 16 years, receiving nothing for the SROs, we now receive $100,000. In negotiating the contract, you know, and working with the mayor and council, they had asked if we could find or devise a way in which we could save money with regard to overtime. Because what was happening is, based on the way that the schedule works, they were, the SROs were receiving a tremendous amount of overtime. We devised a acceptable plan to both mayor and council, as well as myself negotiating with the police, PVA, and the superiors, and we came out with no additional overtime, and we receive $100,000 for the service of these two officers. And the reason we were able to eliminate the overtime in very good fashion was that I said, "Why don't we have them work the hours that they work at the school, and when the school is off, they are off?" So, it eliminated that, that fifth day needing to receive overtime, and it, right now, it's worked tremendously well. In addition, the, there was discussion with the Board of Education that initially, they had, I believe, somewhere in, to the tune of about 450 to maybe $500,000 for funding additional SROs in the school, or hiring, you know, retired police officers. There was a meeting held, oh, I would say about a month ago, in the mayor's office with the Board of Education, board members, and the board superintendent, and the business administrator. I was present, and there was a discussion as to a process. Right now, there is a, an agreement being worked through, in our, on our behalf, Justin Marchetta is working with the Board of Education, working on that particular agreement. And as far as cost savings, there'll be an additional cost savings. We'll do the same type of, if there will be utilized, two SROs that will also be paying $50,000 each. And there's other details that are not worked out yet, so I, it's a, contracts in negotiation. One of the things they also are leaning towards, and this is the Board of Education, was to fund the salary, half the salary, for a ranking officer to be in charge of the safety program throughout the schools, as well as having a youth service person, so.
Alan.
Yes.
Just a quick question. I'm glad that, obviously, there's dialogue going on regards to providing the best security for our children, the school district. But I would really like to see the chief of police actually come here to a public meeting and explain to us, because each year, he comes in front of this council, asking for manpower to provide safety to, obviously, the public. So, we really need to, as a council, because remember, that, that contract that was voted upon by this council, we went through painstaking, and I know that you're saying we have a savings, but we actually have a negative, because we paid out so much money in overtime that should have never happened, because it wasn't written in their contract. We corrected that as a team. We worked as a team.
As a team, yes, correct.
So, if we're going to add two new police officers to be in the school district, and obviously, now a supervisor, so now, you're taking three officers off the road, we're especially positioned to put them inside, or we're finding three new officers, obviously, in our new 2016 budget. So, I think that it's only responsible for you and everybody else here to come in front of the council and not have these meetings without us knowing what's going on, because I have no problem with seeing retired police officers being hired by the school board, and there's always been two of our police officers in the school district forever. I was a dare officer. I was actually on the Board of Ed when I pushed for the cameras in those, actually, the two high schools, the two middle schools, and they improved the securities in the other grammar schools. But if we're going to start using our assets that are in the police department, and now we need a supervisor there, you really need to have the chief of police come in front of us to speak with us and explain that in great detail of how we're going to have a better service, not only for the children in the district, obviously, for the residents that are, that live in town also. I just don't understand why the school would not hire, think about it, the two officers they have there now are great officers. They have 50 years of experience between both officers, actually, probably 50, 55 years, because one officer had 30 years on the road. So, why they're not just hiring two retired police officers, or even three, and creating their own supervisor? You know, we're working with them to put two of our officers there. And you got to remember, for years, we paid the full salaries for being there.
I do remember, and that's why I feel very, very blessed to be part of making it work, get the $100,000.
Absolutely. But my point of matter is, we're going to get the bodies from, to obviously, put in there, it's still a cost to the town. So, the chief of police should come here and explain to us.
I think it would be, I would love that. I would love that.
That'd be great. I think it's a great idea, but we really need to think this out.
Need to flesh, flesh it out.
Absolutely.
And the agreements are in.
It's already, yeah. It's not ready. And just remember, you know, if it wasn't for us being involved with you, we would have been paying out overtime that was, the public would not want to be happy to hear those numbers that we're paying on overtime for those officers being there.
I'm glad we worked together on that.
Yes, of course, teamwork.
Teamwork.
Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes, Mr. Stanton.
Consent agenda. Be resolved. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the township council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which case the item be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, segmented by Mr. DiPiero. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Township office reports.
I have one. Dad, dad.
I'd like to provide the council with the first report of the budget expenses so far with our new system that we just converted on September 1st. There are some certain things that are not completely reconciled, but I want to provide that with, for you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to talk to the update. We were very successful finally in the selling of all the, those police cars, or, you know, not police cars, cars that were taken by the police. And we, we didn't receive quite the 5,000 we were hoping for, but a couple of things happened. We received $4,322.99, and they come in and they remove the vehicle. So, we, we cleaned up an area, and we got, we got money for them taking away these cars that were bid upon through GovDeals. So, this is something that going forward will help clean up areas such as the, you know, Public Works, the utilities, and we're very pleased to see that. Just for the mayor and council, I have a list of all those that have now registered for both the New Jersey State League, and also the Morris County League luncheon for November. So, if you have any questions, to make sure that you're on the list, if you do, I can provide that, that answer to you. So, we're pleased we were able to work that out. And then publicly, I'd like to thank Nora, and Leslie, and Susan, and Lucy for making the, the job of acting clerk very, very smooth. It's, it's a, it's a great pleasure to know that we have wonderful employees who do step up and are doing their darndest, and, and taking the time and the effort and the energy. So, publicly, I'd like to thank them, because it doesn't just happen. There's a lot of moving parts, and, a lot of moving parts, I'll just say. moving parts and, uh, a lot of moving parts, I'll just say that. And some of them don't always move together, I think.
Thank you, Nora, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Paul, just wanted to tell you. The township has been sued by SJP Properties, both the township and the planning board, relative to the, to the UPS site. I did receive a courtesy call from the attorney for SJP Properties indicating that they were filing the suit, you know, to avoid the statute of limitations concern. Really, the basis of the suit, I think, is lodged in a dispute between UPS and SJP Properties. I've been told that the sides are, are very close to a settlement, uh, and once they resolve their differences and enter into a settlement, I've been assured that the lawsuits will, will also go away. But in the meantime, we have them, uh, we, there's really no need for us to do anything for the moment, hopefully by the time we have to answer them, those disputes will be resolved.
Thank you. Just to give a status update on the clerk.
After, after he gives.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just to let everybody know, we do have the vacancy for the clerk's office. We received over 30 applications for the clerk's position, so it's, it's quite cumbersome for us to go through them. We did conduct telephone interviews already, and we're narrowing down the candidates to bring them in to have in-person interviews shortly. Uh, we did work with Ellen and the administration also to secure her viewpoint, and we are working with them to, to get some interviews set up, so we should have some answers coming down the road.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate having a clerk in place for election?
Right now, the administration, Ellen is our acting clerk, and she's taking care of that for us.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't think so, but, um, again, I can't, I'm, I'm applauding these ladies, and the next time you see me, I will have a couple of more bald spots, but, um, I just, no, we are working.
Nothing wrong with that.
No, oh, excuse me, as the council president said, nothing wrong with that, I can, I, I kind of understand his point of view, but, uh, no, we, we, um, I'm glad we're laughing, because we need to laugh, because it, it is a heady, um, a heady undertaking. Like I said, Nora and Susan, in particular, are very instrumental in, in making this work. I've reached out to both the county and, uh, the clerk of the county to give us some assistance, and I'm looking into, especially in the evening when we have to do the tallies. As you know, there's 39, um, areas, and maybe there's maybe 15 locations, so, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a large undertaking, but we're reaching out to a retired clerk to, to do the figures. We, we had someone in mind that had helped us out, but unfortunately, she has a personnel, a personal, um, issue that she can't help us. But we're, the council is supportive, the mayor's supportive, we're going to get it done, we're going to get it done in fine fashion. It might be a little bit of a heavy lift, but we're, we're, as you know, you heard before, I'm very strong in shaking up what needs to be shook up, so we'll get it done.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen. Yes, Resolution 2015 dash 166, resolution of the Township Council, the Township Precipity Troy Hills, adopting an updated multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Second. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, segmented by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Before we go into closed session, I know there was a question that was asked in reference, because I know the mayor had presented Mr. Lavery, Lavery, as.
Lavery, yes.
A prospectable attorney for the council, but there's been some question as to whether he's working for the town already, which I would think would put him in conflict for that position.
First of all, I don't see a conflict, but I'm, since I'm implicated in the, in the proceedings, um, you know, it's, it's really not for me to, to say. In terms of any work that he's doing for the town, my clear understanding at the last council meeting was that he was not. What I since learned was that on a minor matter involving EMS, to avoid a conflict situation, Justin Marchetta from my office brought him in for a very small assignment, I think the total bill was like $600. Um, I, I'm not aware of, of any work that he's doing now, but again, I, in a general sense, I don't see that, that there would be a conflict, but, you know, I think you may want to discuss that, or somebody may want to discuss that with Mr. Lavery.
Okay, thank you.
Council president, would you like me to give Mr. Lavery a call? I know he thinks highly of me.
Yes, sure.
I'll give him a call.
Okay, at this time, we'll be going to closed session. Closed session resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, public law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and personnel matters. It's actually in reference to affordable housing and the SJA Properties potential lawsuit. And whereas minutes will be kept, once the matter involving the confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved of the Township Council, the Township Precipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn it to closed session by myself.
Make a motion.
Segmented by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. This time entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, segmented by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.